Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting of the New London Board of Selectmen to order. It is Thursday, February 22. And the first thing on our agenda is a public hearing with regard to a proposed bond. This public hearing is being held to receive comment on the proposed issue of bonds or notes in the amount of $900,000 for the purpose of purchasing property at 27 Siemens Road. The question of whether to issue bonds or notes for this purpose will be placed on the warrant to be voted on at town meeting Wednesday, March 13, 2024. This hearing is being held pursuant to RSA 33:8-A. The selectmen have voted not to recommend this article because we believe that it is premature to purchase property next to the police station when we have not yet fully explored whether it is in the best interest of the town to renovate Bukeur to keep the police station there or to move the police station at some point in the future. Does anyone wish to make comments on this bond issue? No? Okay. All right. Then there are no motions needed on this, so I will close the public hearing on the bond. Okay. The next item is, I will ask Sherri Williams to address the board. You have something you want to tell us?
Yes.
Sherri Williams, Board of Trustees, and we have great news from the library. The trustees are delighted to announce that we have an interim library director. Laura Abrahamson is an experienced public library director, and she comes to us from Francistown. And she will be supporting the library's staff and guiding the library through this period between permanent directors. She believes that public libraries are essential public good, and she uses her skills and her experience to develop libraries that are centers of learning and recreation for the entire community. So the staff and the trustees are very happy that Laura is on board, so please join us in welcoming Laura to the library and to New London.
Welcome.
Laura, would you like to address?
Thank you for that introduction. I'm very happy to be here. You may have seen a little bit of my biography on the library website or on Facebook. And it, I think today is day eight. And the first day was something, but, you know, every day is a little bit better. And I am just so wowed by the staff here and how they have really kept things going. And I'm happy to be here to support them and to see where we go together in the future. So, any quick questions, anybody?
Aye.
No?
Also none.
All right. Thank you, Laura. That's wonderful and welcome. All right. Do we have any, does anyone have any old business they'd like to talk about or anything that is not on our agenda for tonight? Or public comments? John? Come up and state your name, okay?
I can't remember. John Wilson. And I'm hoping at the moment I'm coast-to-coast television. During the past 10 years, the future of the New London Police Station has become a major subject of conversation. Multiple studies and queries have looked into both the location and, to a lesser extent, the design of the police station. Public discord concerning the subject has increased. So more than 50 fellow voters have petitioned the town to place what is now Article IV on the warrant to be voted upon at the town meeting on March 13. The purpose of Article IV is to give the townspeople the opportunity to provide guidance to the selectmen regarding the future of the police station. Article IV says to see if the town will vote to keep the police station at their current location and not spend more town resources exploring, planning for, or designing a new police station at an alternative location. So a yes vote says that the present location of the police station is what you want. A no vote says that a new police station at another location is what you want. Please plan to vote at the town meeting Wednesday, March 13, and let's finally put this matter to rest. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Are there any other comments? Rich?
Hi, Rich Epstein, resident. And with so somewhat little time between now and when the ballot questions are up for vote, I just want to make sure the right information gets out about...
Talk closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I just want to make sure the right information gets out about the zoning amendments.
Okay.
So I got to see the ballot question about the accessory dwelling units, and it doesn't even make it clear that we currently have the ability to have attached dwelling units. And this change, this amendment adds the ability to have a detached dwelling unit. If I'll read it. The proposed amendment seeks to modify the accessory dwelling unit ordinance with changes that include, but are not limited to, allowing a maximum of three bedrooms, up to 1,250 square feet of interior living space, and allowing either an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit on each property. So the fact that this amendment is amending so that you can now have a detached dwelling unit doesn't even come out in this. I don't know how something like that happens. Additional stuff about the zoning amendments. And for context, per HUD and per New Hampshire Housing, mobile homes and manufactured homes are the same exact thing. And it is, according to the RSAs, you can exclude mobile homes, manufactured homes, from being used as accessory dwelling units. But in the last hearing at the planning board meeting on January 11, it was stated the opposite. And that stopped the discussion, so the public did not get to hear this option being reviewed when we had the ability to change the amendment. And of course, if you look at the surveys that went into the master plan, mobile homes was dead last by a long shot. So, and we know it was stated, but we don't know what happened. We don't know, did anybody in the planning board read the documentation? And I found this very quickly, just by Googling, and it was within the guidelines from New Hampshire Housing about ADUs. So did nobody in the planning board read the guidelines?
I'm sure they did. I can't imagine that they wouldn't. They're rather diligent about following the law. So I think, I think what will happen is many people who aren't sure about something may not vote in favor of it. And they can also read the zoning ordinance if they have questions.
Yeah. How many people read more than the ballot question?
Yeah. Well, hopefully they will, and they'll inform themselves about what is involved with this particular proposal.
So everybody read the guidelines and somehow nobody corrected the statement on January 11?
Rich, I don't know. I honestly don't know.
And there was also other, it feels like there was a clear recommendation for defining ownership in that same guidelines document. And somehow that also got missed.
I'm not going to speak on behalf of the planning board.
Okay. And another thing, I give credit to how much of the persons here who, somebody spoke up in one of the meetings and mentioned that, that New London is actually the fourth dense municipality in the region. And I didn't know that, and I didn't have, wanted to get a little more context of that. So I emailed the New Hampshire Housing, and they sent me to the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development, and they sent me a spreadsheet. The spreadsheet did confirm, yes, we're fourth in the region. And not only that, we're fourth out of 25. We are so much more dense already than most of the region. But somehow, we've had zoning changes in the past few years. There's more zoning changes now to increase the density. And how come information like this doesn't come actually from the planning board? Aren't they supposed to research this sort of stuff?
I'm certain they have. And we also have a housing commission who has spent a lot of time on this issue. And apparently, we don't have affordable housing for all income levels. And that's what they're trying to do, is perhaps give more affordability to some of the housing stock. Now, the density issue, yes, New London does have a lot of people, but one reason they do is because it's a great place to live. So I'm not sure what, you're here, so obviously you think that's the case, and I don't know what, what to tell you with regard to, maybe you should sit in on the housing commission meetings.
I was in, I think...
And offer your opinion.
All or most of the housing meetings, and it never came up.
Well, I, I don't know what to...
And nothing, also, all those things I said about the ADUs didn't come up in the housing meetings either.
All right. I don't know. I have my own opinion about the proposed articles, but I'm going to leave that up to the voters, let them decide whether or not they're in favor of them. So, and I think that might be guidance for you as well.
Okay. I think it's important to get this accurate information out, and that's, and thank you for letting me have that opportunity.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other comments regarding things that are not on our agenda? No? Old business? No? Okay. We have a letter of thanks from, with regard to the New London dispatching from the town of Sunapee, and Kim was going to tell us about that.
Yes, and if it's okay, I can read it.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. This is from the Town of Sunapee Select Board to the New London Police Dispatch. On behalf of the Town of Sunapee, we thank your department for responding to the Prospect Hill Structure Fire on January 18 and 19. The scale and duration of the fire demanded an incredible amount of coordination and effort between all those who contributed their services the evening of the fire, throughout the night, and over the course of the following days. Despite the tragedy of this event and the difficult period of healing and rebuilding that lies ahead for those residents impacted by the fire, we are incredibly fortunate that no lives were lost or serious injury to any residents of the building. Without the support received, we received from our mutual aid partnerships, the consequences of this fire may have been a much higher and far more irreplaceable cost. Collectively, we received the services of 24 fire departments from across New Hampshire, and the joint response ensured that we had the necessary resources to extinguish the blaze, protect surrounding structures, and to provide firefighters with adequate time to rest and recover. It is this community response that reassures us that when an urgent situation arrives, we can lean into the support of neighboring departments and offer ours in turn. To all who provided us with aid throughout the fire, we have our deep, you have our deepest thanks. Sincerely, Town of Sunapee Select Board.
Yeah, that's wonderful. I think, once again, the dispatching department did an amazing job that night handling all the different pieces, because there was not only the fire at Hannaford, but there was this fire in George's Mills. So it was wonderfully done. So, thank you. Okay. And Chief Cobb is here to talk about a communications tower repeater grant.
Thank you. This is a project, this is phase three of several phases of a project that's been going on for many years now to improve our communications and interoperability and basically the radio communications that we have here in the area. So this is phase three of that project. So we have been awarded a grant from the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the communication tower repeater. So this is equipment that will go up on Mount Sunapee. We already have equipment up on Mount Kearsarge, so this will improve coverage for a variety of areas, certainly in addition to New London, but the towns that we dispatch for as well. So it's a, it's a really great thing. And it is in the amount of $135,287. So just looking to talk to you about that tonight and hopefully gain your approval to keep going forward in the process.
Yeah? Does anyone have any questions? The police department's been working on this since, for quite a while.
This one, yes. This one started in the fall of 2019, I think. And then when COVID hit, all sorts of state resources were allocated to the COVID relief effort. So any sort of projects like this just had to, had to wait a little bit. So there's been some other things. So I'm glad to see this one finally coming to fruition.
Yeah.
And we'll be able to improve the radio coverage for, like I said, a variety of towns in addition to New London.
Bill, do you have any questions, Remley?
No, no. I've been following this throughout, throughout that period of time, so I'm fine.
BB, any questions?
So the match, the town must have been up with 130...
Oh, match, yes. Thank you. Yes, match.
I'll let you...
Sorry. Thank you. The match amount is a soft match, something that we can look back on from the beginning of this performance period of the grant, which is, I just had it here, I'm sorry, 10-122. So we can use various things related to this type of project as a soft match. So like some of the portables that New London got last year, or any of the other towns actually that this would impact, we can use that as soft match. It's just, not just the town of New London that has to provide match, I can use match from the town of Newberry if they got something that would qualify here. And I'm fairly confident that we can do that, all the towns across, that we can meet that in the soft match. But there are some funds available, like in a capital reserve, if we needed to, if we weren't able to meet that match amount.
So you don't have to put $135,000 into next year's budget?
No. No.
Okay. What's your timing, do you think, on this, on putting that tower up on...
That equipment, I'd like to get it done this spring. I mean, as soon as we're able to get up there, I would like to get it done as soon as possible. Our radio vendor, Beltronics, knows it's coming. They've also been waiting for it. So we're definitely on the list. As soon as this paperwork is in order, they know that they can, they can get things going.
And does this open up the possibility of other towns being able to be part of, will it be able to reach further?
Well, that's a good question. I haven't looked at the topographical maps for a while and to see where that radio coverage might spread to. So I don't know that answer right now.
Okay. Thank you. And does this add, sorry, does this add to the total you gave us at the last meeting of the amount of grants?
No, this was, this was included in that, yeah.
I tried.
But I'll keep going if I can.
And this is going on Sunapee?
Mount Sunapee, yes.
At the ski area?
Yes.
And they know, they're aware of...
Oh, yes.
That we're about to do this?
Yes. Yep. The fire chief in Newberry, Hank Thomas, has been very, very helpful in getting us up to that space, because you have to go up and take pictures and look at everything. And we needed some updated pictures, and he had them to me within a day. So he's been really helpful to try and help get this project going.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Do I have a motion for this?
Sure. Go ahead. Go for it.
Nowhere. I move to accept the terms of the Emergency Management Performance Grant as presented in the amount of $135,287 for the communication tower repeater project. The board acknowledges that the total cost of this project will be $270,574, in which the town will be responsible for a 50% match, $135,287.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right. We have a list of people that the moderator would like us to accept. These are people who are going to help us with the elections, and it's quite a lengthy list, and we thank all the people who volunteered to do this. So do I have a motion to accept the names on our inspectors of election? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then now we have an abatement request. Oops. On property map 135-003-000. And I think, Kim, you're going to give us some information on this?
Maybe.
I have the, I have it if you don't.
Yeah, I'll probably speak up. Okay, so we have the map and lot number?
The map and lot number, this was a situation where the property owner submitted additional information to the assessing department regarding soils of the property in question, so that the, the amount of wetlands on the property was then made obvious to the assessors. And the, the chief assessor, Chris McAllister, recommends a reduction in the value of the property, which will also result in an abatement of the taxes. So I would recommend that you accept Chris's recommendation of lowering the assessed value in taxes.
Okay. And the refund amount is $8,626. This property is on Lake Sunapee, so it obviously is valued at quite a bit, as it is, even though it may be, 40% of it is wetland. So do I have a motion to accept the abatement?
Go for it.
I move that we accept the abatement report from the chief assessor of map 135-003-000.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Kim, do you have a report?
As some of you may know, we had a water main break on Main Street today. I have a picture of it. Hold on a second. Hold on. Yeah, there we go. So that's the pipe that was broken over by Spring Ledge. I understand if the water isn't on now, it should be soon, but it was probably close to 10 hours. They originally thought it would be four to eight hours. So another reason why the water main project that hopefully will happen this summer is really needed. That's all I have.
Okay. Bill, do you have any committee reports?
Sure. Update on the, on the water main project. The water precinct is holding a bond hearing on the 29th of February. That's next week at 12:30 in the afternoon at their offices on Stump Dump Road to discuss the $4.9 million bond that they are now contemplating for this project. It's been delayed a couple of times because of waiting for final information from potential financial sources. From the point of view of the New London taxpayers who are part of the water precinct, this will probably add about 48 cents to our water tax bill for the duration of the bond. And the current tax rate is 74 cents, so this is a substantial increase and not unlike the increases that the town, the water precinct users, or water precinct residents have had when the big tank went up behind Colby Sawyer, when the roundabout project was redone, and a lot of water work had to be done there. So while it sounds like a big amount, it's a, actually, we're quite low right now because there are no bonds outstanding. So if you're interested in this project, more about the timing of it and so on, it's 29th at 12:30 at Stump Dump Road, the water precinct offices. Then last evening, I represented the selectmen at the budget discussion about process and ideas for future budget committee activity. Thank you, BB, for letting me do that. I thought it was a very, just for the record, a very useful exchange. I suggest anybody who's interested in the details who wasn't there to view the recording, which is up and in place. I think a couple of the takeaways were that going, getting right up to speed in the middle of the budget process, if you're a new member of the budget committee, can be quite difficult. And so there was quite a bit of discussion about how to do a better job of getting the new members, there are going to be three new members of the budget committee, one way or another, getting them up to speed so they don't suddenly come roaring into the actual preparation of the budget. There was discussion of putting more attention to the CIP process by the budget committee in cooperation with the planning board. There was a rousing support for the way we conducted our budget process this past year with the one-day meeting, and the department heads were, suggested that they very much would like us to continue to do that process. There was also recognition that the department heads have a heavy workload and that there needs to be careful attention to how much they're being asked to do in a short period of time. So I suggest that we meet with the new budget committee sometime in the spring and carry on from there. But I would say there was a good feeling of comradeship and cooperation there last night.
That's interesting you say that. I watched part of the meeting, and I heard Charlie talking about, you know, the struggle this year, being a new member, and Lou mentioning, I was a second member. I'm, I was new on the budget committee this year, too. When I first got on the school board, I remember I just, I felt like I was just thrown into it with really no preparation at all. So myself and another school board member put together kind of an onboarding package for new school board members. So I would be happy to volunteer to work with Chris and Kim and whoever else, maybe Charlie might want to be part of that, to kind of put together, Colin maybe might want to help with that, to put together a package for when new members join. And maybe we could start with the budget committee, can be, do, something to be done with all the committees in town, because it is, it is helpful.
I think Kim and Lynn have tried to do this.
Yeah.
The problem is, how does it, how do you get to take? Because talking about it on paper is one thing, and then diving into...
Yeah, 100%.
Six or seven weeks of meetings is something else.
True. And the NHMA class that I did, too, I know Lynn did it again this year, and I think Charlie did it, Emily did it, too, was, was really helpful. I actually, I think I want to do it again next year, now that I've had a year under my belt of doing this.
Right. And some years ago, before Lynn, Wendy and I used to do a Saturday morning training session for those budget committee members who worked and couldn't go to the NHMA session. So that was a possibility, too. But I think we haven't had that many new members recently.
Yeah.
And so maybe we can bring that back as well.
Okay.
I do want to say, BB, that my second time through that class, I got so much more. So I definitely recommend going through that a second time, now that you've got more under your belt.
Yeah. Excellent.
Sounds like a field trip coming up.
Are you all set, Bill?
Aye.
Okay, BB?
Okay. Two things. First, I had a tri-town watershed committee meeting last week. Kim, Kim attended this time because they wanted the town administrators to attend so we could talk a little bit about having the, all the towns involved in code enforcement. So Kim's been having meetings with the two other town administrators on moving forward with those conversations. I think a struggle seems to be that each town has much different codes, so it would make it hard for one person to keep track of the three different towns. But anyway, it was a good conversation, so we talked about that. We also continued conversation on the septic ordinance idea. So I asked Kim to give you guys copies, yep, of what's going on the warrant article this, this year for Newberry. So they're taking a different position than Sunapee did by putting it on the warrant article and also making it town-wide, the, the three-year flushing requirement, instead of Sunapee where they just did the Shoreline District. So they've had some really positive feedback in Newberry, and they really feel like it's going to kind of pass with flying colors. So I reported that we would be keeping our eye on it. I am in favor of doing something like that and hope to add some information sessions, add to our agenda perhaps in our next community gathering that we have, to have a presentation done on this by Nick or by people from this group, the Watershed Initiative Group. So that was a good conversation. And what else did we talk about? We also talked about fireworks displays over the lakes. So if you've been following the news, you might have seen that the Newberry Board of Selectmen voted that at their old home day this summer that they are not going to use traditional fireworks, they're going to use a drone laser display. So they're getting, it's all being paid for by Vail and some other private donor, I think, or is it the Yacht Club, or, I forget. So they were able to take $17,000 out of their budget for Old Town Home Day, because they won't be... But it was, again, interesting conversation, and now the town of Sunapee is going to talk to the Yacht Club about changing the way they do fireworks, because the Yacht Club is also going to do drone laser fireworks this year and not traditional fireworks. So we don't, New London doesn't do fireworks over the lakes. The town doesn't sponsor any. Some of the other groups do, but we don't. So we don't, New London doesn't do fireworks over the lakes. The town doesn't sponsor any. Some of the other groups do, but we don't. So anyway.
Something to think about.
Something to think about.
Right.
Yep, very interesting. Then this week, which I know some people in here are interested in hearing about this, Kim and I attended the, a call by the Joint Board of the Coalition Communities 2.0 to get an update on the school funding lawsuits and the status of that right now. So as you know, as in people in the audience, Mary may not know, there were two decisions that came down in November, one in RAND versus State of New Hampshire and the other CONVAL versus the State of New Hampshire. In the CONVAL decision, the judge increased the adequacy aid amount per student for the state's funding of public education from approximately $4,100 up to $7,800. And in the RAND decision, the court ruled that it was unconstitutional for the 29 towns in the state who collect excess swept money. And it would take me three hours to explain what that is to you all today. If anybody wants to learn more about it, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to send you information and have a conversation. But anyway, New London is one of those 29 towns that collects excess swept money to the tune of about 1.2 million. So the judge ruled that that money can't be kept by the towns anymore and has to be sent back to the state. So the Coalition Communities and the State of New Hampshire both filed appeals in those two decisions. The judge came back and denied those motions for stay, I guess they were.
Reconsideration.
Reconsideration. Thank you, Kim. So the case is now going to go to the Supreme Court. So as of this moment, right now, that, the towns are not able to keep that excess money. But stay tuned, because the attorneys that are representing us, she and Finney and Bass are really on top of it, talking to legislators. Ultimately, it's going to be up to the legislature. This is just a guidance from the judge. It's up to the legislature to change or change the way that public education is funded in the state of New Hampshire. There was a bill filed, HB 1686, that would have codified the RAND decision. That today was tabled in the legislature. So that is done for the year, so we don't have to worry about that. Interestingly enough, it came out of the Education Committee with a 10-10 vote, where two Democrats actually joined the rest of the Republicans and two Republicans joined the Democrats. As you can imagine, it had to do what towns they were from. So Linda Tanner is a Democrat who went over, who represents Sunapee and represents Springfield in the Kearsarge District, who went and voted with the Republicans against the bill. Okay. So I guess we talked extensively on the call about what we would do if this stays in place. And ultimately, it's that school would send a bill to the town in the fall for an extra $1.2 million and we would have to collect that $1.2 million. It would result in about a approximately 60 cents per thousand increase in the tax rate. So I encourage you all to contact your state representatives, your legislators, and let them know that the $1.2 million extra swept that we're collecting is going to education funding. It's not going to buying two new dump trucks for the Highway Department. It's going into the school budget. And it's, so it's, it's the way that the swept, the swept system was developed in 2005. There have been a lot of changes since 2005 in the way we fund public education and the expenses. The state used to put a lot of money into the retirement systems for the teachers. Now they don't put any. It's all up to local taxpayers. Health insurance numbers have gone up significantly. Property evaluations have changed significantly in many of these towns. It's time to update the way school is funded in the state. So what else did I want to say? One other thing I just want to put out there is, we've got to find other ways, forms of revenue, right, in the state to fund this stuff. So today, the full House voted to move forward legalization of marijuana. And in that legislation, 65% of those revenues would go into the Education Trust Fund. It's great, that's thinking outside of the box. So it still has a way to go. Still has to get to the governor's desk for signature, but that's the update. So I'll try to take questions and answer them the best I can, but I can't promise anything.
John?
Can I, can we talk to you?
Oh, okay, go ahead, Bill.
So Bibi, just to make sure that I understand how the taxes work, because you had six years on the school board to help us. The school board and the municipal budget committee come up with a budget.
Yeah.
We vote on that.
Yeah.
Most years, it's the same.
Yeah, well.
And then, and then
The two budgets are the same.
The two budgets are the same.
Yes.
And then the school, then the town, because we're the taxing authority, is responsible for raising that amount of money.
Correct.
So, and then in addition to that, the town raises the state educational fund money.
Correct.
Which is actually being used by the school department to reduce its request for other funds from the town.
For local taxes from the town. And that's only for New London and Newberry.
Right.
Yes.
So when you say that the school department will send another bill to the town, it's not that the town is increasing its tax rate from 1081 to 1140 something, it's the school district portion of the tax rate is going to go up.
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Because we are just the taxing authority. We're not the people who are determining how much is spent on education. Is that, am I right?
You're right. So if, so the total bill for New London is $12 million. I'm just, I'm using round numbers.
I know. I'm actually playing with you here, so for recording purposes here.
Yeah, exactly. No, this is good. So the first part of it, the state piece, the swept piece, is, says, you know, an adequate funding is $4,100 per student. Kearsarge has 362 students or whatever it is in the district. That times that is this number, 1.2 million. But when we look and take your valuations and we take the minimal amount that we can charge per your $1,000, you actually are able to raise 2.4 million dollars. So then they tell Kearsarge, New London has paid 2.4 towards their $12 million bill. Now New London uses local taxes to come up with the rest. Well, now the state's going to tell Kearsarge, we're only sending you 1.2 million dollars towards New London's obligation. We're keeping the other 1.2 to send to another school district. New London's got to come up now with 10 and a half million.
Right.
So that then results in our tax rate.
The point I'm trying to make is, in the budget package for the budget hearing a couple of weeks ago, there were some nice charts showing the percentage of money spent on various places that we pay taxes to.
Yes.
County and the schools and so on.
Correct.
This discussion we're having here has to do with the school part of that.
Correct.
What our budget committee here talked about last night and continues to talk about is only the services provided by the town.
Oh, yeah.
And not by the school district or by the county. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. So that 60 cents is not, people shouldn't be sitting here adding that 60 cents to the $10.81. On the other hand, they should be adding the 48 cents for the Water Precinct, those who are in the precinct.
Mm-hmm.
And incidentally, maybe I just divert here. People don't understand the Water Precinct. If you're in the Water Precinct, even if you're not hooked up to the water, you pay for that, the privilege of having that infrastructure there. There are some 200 parcels in this Springfield-New London area that do not use water, but do pay for the infrastructure. Interesting piece of history there.
Okay.
John, you have a question?
John?
And I also wanted to invite Maureen Pearl, if she has more to add to it, because Maureen's pretty up to, up on this stuff as well.
Yeah, the question I had was in the 4,100 and the 7,800. What year was the 4,100 established?
Established? Ask Randy Foose that question, because he was part of the committee that came up with that number. I think it was 2005.
Okay, so the 7,800 is a 2023 number?
Yep, and it's still not sufficient, but
And, yep, and of that, part of that reason for the 7,800 is the benefits, the pension and the health insurance and all of that has caused that increase per student?
Excuse me. John, you know what? I'll send you an email with the decision from the judge, because the judge has, there are spreadsheets in their calculations that show exactly what is included in that 7,800. And the argument from the CONVAL folks is, you're not including all of the things like what you just described. They're not including transportation, they're not including a nurse's salary, they're not including facilities costs in that adequacy number.
Uh-huh.
So it's, it's
Right.
That's why it's much closer, the state average for educating per student in the state is closer to $18,000, $19,000 per student.
Right. And I assume that if we're not successful, if the attorneys are not successful with their plea to this, this will continue to increase every year now?
And the other piece of this puzzle, too, is that in the judge's ruling, by increasing the adequacy number to 7,800, thereby increasing the obligation that the state now needs to reach, which is now up to 900 million from 363 million.
Hmm.
That will now create, and it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, but it, when you see it on paper, it does, that is now going to increase the number of towns from 29 to around 60 that will be collecting that excess swept money. So I think the legislators are, they already are, I know they're already working hard on this.
Yep.
There's about eight bills that are floating around right now. They know that they have to take care of this issue, that it's an antiquated way of how they're determining these tax amounts. So I'm just hoping, politically speaking, that the Supreme Court or somebody is going to put a stay on this.
Yeah.
Because I'm hoping that the legislators will hear from as many people as possible.
Right. So it's really reevaluating a town like New London
Yeah.
And giving some of what we've had to those less fortunate?
Yeah.
Towns.
Which is kind of why we created this school district, right? Because that's what we're doing now. I mean, I have numbers that I'll share with you as well. New London has 20, hold on a second, get it right here. Warner students make up 21% of the Kearsarge Regional School District. Warner taxpayers pay 15.6% of the budget.
Hmm.
New London students make up 20% of the student body in the district and New London pays 23.3% of the cost. New London and Newberry pay 45.5% of the school district budget, but yet have approximately 35% of the students in the district. So we've already done that here.
Right.
Right? So that's what the legislature needs to do, is to figure out how we're going to do that for
Make it more equitable.
Yeah.
I mean, if we've got 20% of the students and we're paying 23%.
Yeah, and we, the 29 towns, need to speak up and say, don't take our money, we're using it in our school districts. We're not spending it on something else.
Yeah, it's, they're flipping everything.
Yeah.
So it's not, okay, thank you.
Okay.
I just have one. I just want to say one short thing about that.
Say who you are.
I'm Maureen Pearl. In 1967, when the school district was formed, we had an apportionment formula to make it more fair for towns that had less that, and maybe, I don't like to use Warner as an example, but I will, I worked there for 15 years. In terms of property valuation, they have much less bang for their buck. They don't have commercial properties, as we do. They have a large state park taking up a lot of land. Anyhow, excuse me?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to address it. So anyhow, what I'm saying is, the apportionment formula in the beginning was, I think, 75-25 in 1967. In 19, was it?
I think you're right. And then they changed in the 90s.
They changed it. They changed it in 1994, I think, to 60-40. 60% property valuation, 40% average daily membership. So that was done in an effort to make it more fair so that the haves pay more and the have-nots pay less.
Right.
So you cannot just say, they only have, they have 20% of the kids, but they're only paying 15%. It's also, you cannot take the property value, the property valuation out of the equation, because that was what was used to level the playing fields for the seven towns in this district. And I feel very strongly that, I hope that this whole issue that we're having right now is coming to a head and that will force the state of New Hampshire, it'll be like a power play, or what do they call it in sports, a forced play, that they will have to address education in a different way, because everybody is complaining about it. Warner, who pays, what, $17 per thousand?
Right.
They have a reason to complain.
Right.
Anyhow.
I totally agree with you, Maureen, and I agree that I wasn't, I hope I wasn't coming across to say that New London is paying more, you know, that wasn't the way. We, all seven towns have benefited from this regional school district. It's enriched every single student and I don't think New London, Newberry should have a problem paying a little bit extra, because everybody has benefited.
Right, but I also agree with you that it's sort of like the state is blindsided.
Yeah, exactly.
We and Kearsarge have been doing this for a long time.
Right.
And you come up with another plan and think it's novel and people are complaining about it. So I just really hope that this is going to force the issue. I'm glad they tabled the RAND thing today. I think it gives us, it buys us a year. But we're going to be paying more than a million, because it's, the cost per pupil is going up. Meanwhile, out the back door goes 7,000, what is it, 7,100 now? $7,100 is going to go for the students who are going out the back door to private schools, homeschools, sectarian, non-sectarian. They're all getting the per pupil costs as well. So
We could talk about this for hours.
I know.
Thanks, that's it.
There was a Board of Fire Awards meeting on Monday and Jay reported, Chief Lyon reported that there have been five fires in the last week. You know, of course, we talked about George's Mills and the Hannaford Fire. And it's interesting to note that the departments from Nashua and Merrimack attended that fire.
Wow.
So there have also been fires in Croydon, Wilmette, and Grantham. With regard to new engine two, which has arrived, they have to take everything off that, the old engine, and put it on the new one. And one of the things they had to do was take the hose off. And they needed a building big enough to pull the hose out, so they could put it on the other one. And fortunately, Dergan and Crowell offered their building, because we don't have a building big enough to pull out hose and put it on another truck. So that worked out well. And they've used the new engine already for motor vehicle crashes and Fish and Game has used it with them for cold water rescues. They're going to need to replace their utility truck, which they had budgeted $55,000 for, but the cost is going to be $77,000. So there's going to be a motion at town meeting to increase that amount. They have that in their reserve account, so what they're going to be asking for is that they can be allowed to spend $77,000 instead of 55. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of January 18th and February 8th?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our next selectmen's meeting is going to be March 7th, 5:30 PM here. And I remind everyone that the town elections are Tuesday, March 12th. From, the polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And then town meeting will be Wednesday, March 13th at 7:00 PM at the Kearsarge Learning Center Gymnasium. Is there any other business? Bill?
Yes, I'd like for us to just talk for a couple of minutes and maybe we'll do it again on the 7th about what our response is going to be to Article 4 on the warrant.
Okay.
That John Wilson presented earlier. Do we have plans to do anything together? How do, how do we feel about individual members of the Board of Selectmen taking public positions on the article as opposed to our group vote and so on? on the article as opposed to our group vote and so on?
Totally up to you guys. I'm happy to, I've, I've got comments prepared in my head, and I've started to draft something. I plan to run it by Kim and Chief Cobb. I'm actually, wanted to reach out to Chief Cobb to see if I might be able to talk to her a little bit more about it, and maybe even talk to Colliers about it, but I, I'm happy to speak on behalf of the board, or if you'd like to make individual, it's up to you all.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be appropriate if you, if you addressed it.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
And how, are we going to do any publicity or anything? And how do we feel if an individual member like myself wanted to do something, make a statement prior to the meeting about my personal feelings on it?
Okay, you mean like a letter to the editor, that type?
Whatever, yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, I think that's appropriate. I think in the past, we haven't always, we've remained silent on some of these, when people have indicated that they're not in favor of something that we're proposing, and I think it's probably a good idea that we step up and say what we think. And I, I think we're all in the same, I know we're all in the same opinion, because we feel that the, we've already voted on things indicating we're in favor of a new location for the police station, so.
I'm in favor of continuing the work of determining the future of the police station.
Right.
That's what I'm in favor of, and that's what I'm concerned about, is, is that this will be seen as, you know, that one or the other. As John, I wrote down from John's comments, a no vote would mean that you want the police to stay somewhere else. Well, actually, I think a no vote could also mean, let's give the selectmen another year to do their due diligence. Now, I know this has been going on for ten years, but this is my first year involved in all of this, and I think we've listened to taxpayers say they want more details and on the cost, and, you know, and I've said to other people, Colliers is looking at those three sites, but they're also looking at the current site. So that's my hope, is that over the next year, that we'll have that chance to communicate more with the, with the town through our community meetings, through community forums, through social media, through municipal, whatever it is, and with a report from Colliers. And I just don't wanna cut off our nose to spite our face, so that's where I'm.
Well said.
Yep, okay. Anything else?
Thank you, that's my practice for what I.
Maureen, you wanna say something?
I just wanted to ask one question.
It's being recorded.
Oh, is that why?
Yeah.
I just wanna ask the question. If I recall correctly, last town meeting, the, the sense of the meeting, to me, was that New London Board of Selectmen, don't keep coming back to us and saying, you know, here's a piece of land, here's how we might, how much we might spend on the building. Come back to us with a well-thought-out proposal.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I remember. So I, I thought that's what you were doing this year.
Mm-hmm.
And what I think, there's a problem with optics. What I think is, people are saying, they're only doing this, that means this other possibility of the police station staying there, they're not even looking at that. They're just going ahead with their own agenda. That's how I think it's perceived. So I would love it if you could finish up your work and then give the town two different options.
That's what we're trying to do.
With a price tag on each one.
Yeah, I agree.
So how can you cut off discussion?
We're, we're not, that's, but that's what John's proposing.
But are people understanding what the issue is here? Are the people understanding that you are doing what we asked you to do, and now you come back with your proposal?
We don't have a proposal yet.
Well, I, I mean, when you do.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna line it up with staying in the, in the department as is, and how much that will cost to renovate it. And then the visitors can vote on whatever. But can you, can, can you do that, like in a town meeting, or do you have to have it, do people have to check it off in the voting booth, or how can that work?
Nothing's gonna happen at this town meeting, except for.
We were hoping to have something ready for this town meeting, but we just didn't have enough time. And my feeling is, I don't wanna rush this.
Right.
I want this to be, I wanna get consensus before we get to the town meeting, right? So that it'll be an easy vote. That would be my dream.
Okay, but can, are people gonna be aware at the town meeting of what your ultimate goal was, to have two well-thought-out proposals? Because the, I think the optics, and I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but the optics are, the selectmen are just going out and getting this all together, and we're gonna vote on that one, as opposed to, we're gonna have.
So Maureen, maybe EB needs to say it more sharply than she did a couple of minutes ago, when she said that she, that Colliers, the consultant that's currently working on this, was looking at at least three sites plus this one.
I have not heard that. That's the first time I've heard.
She said that about five minutes ago, yeah.
I know she did, but that's the first time I've heard that.
And I, and, and I've, I've heard what you're saying, and I've tried to say that to people that, oh, they are looking at this option too, to, so I appreciate that, Maureen, that, your perspective, and maybe I'll run my comments by you ahead of the meeting, a town meeting.
But, Maureen, you could also help the neutrality of what you just said by saying what you said there at town meeting, and not just with this small group of people here.
Well, I was actually thinking that, I think this calls for a newspaper article. You need to get the, the message, you need to communicate your message, instead of everybody hearing from their silo, their tribe. They need to hear it, the broad picture. It needs to be taken in context. Now, I will be quiet.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, no.
We're not done yet? Okay. Go ahead, Bill.
On a totally different subject.
Okay.
You may be aware of the fact that this past week, the president of the hospital announced that he was moving to a new and bigger job at Dartmouth-Ichcock Medical Center, and I simply would like us to go on record perhaps, and ask him to prepare a, a letter to him from the Board of Selectmen, thanking him for his four years of service to the town. I think it's been outstanding period of time for him, starting the day that the COVID came and going, going through now, and I think he's done quite a good job, so I would, with your agreement, like.
Yes.
To prepare a letter for him.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's gonna be really missed, but the Dartmouth system is gonna benefit.
Right, yeah.
So we got some goodies to do, then we can adjourn.
Okay, all right. Okay.